Springfield, who is our newest presenting partner.
Well, good morning. And thank you so much, Torian. What an inspiring group of speakers. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Helen and Christopher. What a proud moment as mother and son. Thank you, Colin. It's a privilege to be in the room. I am joined by several MGM Springfield team members as well. Unfortunately, Beth Ward is on vacation. But wonderful to share this moment with each of you. You know, as I was thinking about the speakers that came before me this morning, there were certain themes that I heard repeated in one way or another. Themes of community, of inclusion, and ultimately of love. And when we think about the word love and the impact that that has on us. They say that when we receive love as individuals, it makes us stronger. And when we give love to another, well, they say that that builds courage. And when we combine these qualities, these qualities of community, of inclusion, of love, strength and courage, when I becomes we, that is when together we can create an invincible tide of change. And that is exactly what this event represents. We are so proud to be a part of this. As MGM Springfield, we can't wait to march alongside you on June 3rd. And I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday this weekend. Thank you so much.
All right. So we've come to the close of this amazing press conference here. But before, I would like to express my sincerest gratitude to Springfield Pride Parade Organization team and board. We have a few board members, my mother, President. We have Terrence King, our treasurer as well. We have Cherie, our planning committee for our inaugural U Ball. We have Kim Williams also on our planning committee of our inaugural U Ball as well. And we also have, where is Alfonso? Where did he go? Oh, Alfonso Cintonello is also another committee member. And Ray Berry, the amazing Ray Berry from White Line Brewery. Which we also have amazing collaboration that we're doing with White Line for the month of June that we'll be working on. So please stay tuned to that. And of course, again, thank you so much to our presenting partners, the city of Springfield itself. And Mayor Sarno, thank you so much. The Department of Health and Human Services, the amazing Commissioner Carlton Harris. Mass Mutual, Colin Anthony, thank you so much. Springfield Technical Community College, Dr. Shai Butler and the team, thank you again. And our newest and so exciting MGM Springfield. So Chris, thank you again. You know, each of you have really contributed to making this event. What we set this out to be for our second annual is bigger and better. And thank you so much. So I will see everybody June 3rd, well, June 1st for the flag raising. And then more and more to come. So thank you again to all of our partners and also the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Here's the $65 million question. Why does the utility, EverSource, want to build a brand new gas pipeline right through towns in Western Massachusetts? Legislators, environmentalists, health professionals and local residents are saying that this project must be stopped.
This is not reliability. This is just creating a different point of failure for the entire Springfield gas supply and costing us $65 million to do it and polluting the air of Springfield even more when we are already 12th on the list of asthma capitals in the nation. One in five.
So this pipeline is starting here in Long Meadow and actually moving through very densely populated neighborhoods, passing very close to Wolf Swamp Elementary School and then continuing on over the border into Springfield, into Forest Park. There are playing fields. It's where children play. And then moving across through another densely populated neighborhood, passing through Sumner Avenue School and then passing into downtown Springfield that's centered right where this pipeline is to go through.
What's the purpose of this? And what was reported to us was that it would be a second backup pipeline in addition to the main pipeline that already comes into the city of Springfield. We asked very pointedly, is this pipeline that currently is in existence, is there a danger of it failing? And the answer to those questions was no.
The existing system is 70 years old, you know, really indefinite as long as we continue to maintain it.
Why now? Why all of a sudden do you need this extra construction when you've had, you know, reliable power in both communities for a long time?
Going through some of the most fragile neighborhoods in the Commonwealth.
This isn't just about a pipeline that's going underground just in case the other one breaks down. This is about people and it's about people being healthy.
We know that gas lines all leak. We know that they leak methane, which is toxic. So the more pipelines that we have, the more pollutants will be in the air.
Historically, Springfield has said to be the asthma capital of the US in 2018 and 2019.
Everything that we release into the air comes in into environmental justice communities.
This project here will bring a lot of different activists and organizers together from the Long Meadow community, which isn't an environmental justice community, but Springfield, which is.
Frankly, it might be illegal based on where the Massachusetts environmental justice laws are right now.
And typically, it's black and brown, poor people.
It's a law that we have to fix the problem.
Residents are also nervous about another risk from gas pipelines. They have already experienced disaster.
This used to be a neighborhood.
We had a large explosion on Worris Street. Yeah, gas workers down.
Total devastation. Buildings were leveled to the ground.
Send many ambulances if it can get here.
It was as if someone dropped a bomb. Still recovering. Haven't quite recovered yet.
A backup pipeline at what cost?
The rate payers pay for it. We pay for it.
We also have the added cost of the impact on our healthcare.
It's going to cost us tenfold when it comes to our health outcomes.
There could be a lot of other ways that they could spend the money that would bring us to carbon neutral.
The biggest question of all is why EverSource wants to lock its customers into fossil fuel in the midst of the global climate crisis.
With the new Massachusetts Climate Roadmap Act, we're not supposed to be doing projects that will increase the use of fossil fuels.
The project flies in the face of the bipartisan goal we've had in Massachusetts to transition to renewable energy.
We need them to invest in something that is future-proof, not taking a step back.
The cost of inactivity or putting our head in the sand is greater than the cost of making the change.
Before they can build the pipeline, EverSource needs a go or no-go from government agencies.
If I were DPU, what I would be considering is, what do the people in this community want? And not based on what is best for a corporate profit.
The days of polluters just being rubber stamped in cities like ours are over.
If they want to invest in our city and into our community, into the country, into the world, you know, they should be investing in clean energy.
Folks that make these decisions, let's sit down at the table. Let's get a new scheme.
The opposition to this pipeline is massive and it comes from every front. It remains to be seen, will the DPU listen? And will EverSource get on board with moving Massachusetts to a clean and safe energy future?
Welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends form reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we have no correspondence for this evening, so we'll move right into approval of minutes. We have a recommended motion.
I second the motion.
We have to read the motion first.
I move that the full committee approve the minutes for the June 29th, 2023 school committee meeting as presented.
Perfect, thank you. Now?
I second the motion.
Perfect, all right. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. All right. Visitor comments is our next section. If there are any visitors here who would like to make a comment, welcome to do so. I don't think we have any visitors at home. Right, we are going to move forward then into school committee announcements and recognitions. Any school committee announcements or recognition for this evening? No, some aren't required right now. Nope, all right. And we are on to business with guests. Today, we are going to welcome from LEAF, the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation, Sarah Joku, who is here to join us and tell us about some of the grants that we funded for this year. Welcome, Sarah.
Thanks, Nicole.
Yes, just a quick, Sarah's getting settled. A reminder that committee in points at home under union policy, donations to the district need to be approved by the school committee. So that's the business item in front of you tonight. The opportunity is the year a little bit about the mission of LEAF and all that amazing work that they have done across the district. So thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Marty. Thank you all for having me. And it's nice to meet you for those that I haven't met in the past. But as Nicole said, I'm Sarah Joku. I've been a member of the LEAF Board since 2017 and this year acting as the Chair of the Grant Review Committee. So for those that are less familiar, LEAF is a nonprofit organization founded by a group of dedicated parents in Long Meadow in 2001. So we're over 20 years old. We've been a fundraising and grant-making organization made up of volunteers from the community since that time. LEAF's mission is to ensure the excellence of Long Meadow Public Schools by providing for enriching educational programming outside of the annual school budget. So for those ideas that teachers have that can't necessarily be accomplished within the budget, LEAF is there to help try to make those opportunities available. Since its inception, LEAF has given almost $1.5 million to six Long Meadow Public Schools in the form of grants. LEAF is really fortunate to have the support of the Long Meadow community who generously contributes monetary donations and sponsorship as well as giving their time to keep the board running actively. Like I said, we are a volunteer organization, so we have no paid members. All of the work that LEAF does is done by dedicated volunteer parents. And anybody that wants to learn more about LEAF can go out to our website, which is goleaf.org, or they can find us on our Facebook page. And we're always looking for new board members who want to give their time. So tonight, I'm here to present LEAF's donation for this coming school year. Each year, the administrators and teachers and staff submit proposals for their innovative educational ideas to the LEAF Board. And then a special committee of the board looks through all of those grants and recommends a slate for approval, which the LEAF Board then decides to approve. This year, LEAF has improved $83,000 worth of grants to fund, or $83,000 to fund 39 grants. So I'm not going to go through the entire list the board here or the committee has received the list of every single one of the grants, but I just thought I would speak to some of the things that we saw for this year because I think that's really helpful context. So this year, we, as always, receive requests for large instruments like tubas and French horns. Those are the two of the, to the grants that we were able to fund this year for the instrument community program. We also always receive requests for books. Some of the grants were LEAF thematic, such as graphic novels, which are obviously of really high interest to students in particular as of LEAF. But also really inclusive grants, such as making one popular book accessible to a wide range of reading abilities so that a bunch of peers have the opportunity to engage with the same story and have conversations about that text. One emerging theme that we saw this year seemed to be requests for hard goods, like hard printed atlases or dry erase coordinate planes so that students can collaborate in a way that isn't putting them in front of a screen all the time. And so that was something that we saw kind of emerging in a variety of grants this year. And finally, we saw a number of interdisciplinary grants. So bringing technology into the art room, bringing music and art into the language room, or giving students graphic design tools so that they can prevent, or present their math or their English projects in really innovative ways. So that is my summary of the $83,000 worth of grants that you see in front of you. And I'm happy to take any questions that the committee may have. So anyone have any questions or inquiries?
I'll just say thank you for giving us the list. And thank you again for LEAF's continued support. It's excellent that we have such a wonderful group in our community that is able to offer support to all of our teacher projects. And appreciate the teachers taking the time to fill out the grant applications. And for all the volunteers on LEAF for going through those applications and taking the time to read each one and figure out which one's best suited LEAF's mission for this year. So thank you very much. We appreciate the work you guys do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anything else? We have a possible?
Can I just say, you know, on behalf of the administration, we're so grateful to the support that we received from LEAF. And what I've seen is LEAF's ability to plant seeds that are nourished by teachers and administrators. And then sometimes the seed money that's planted becomes something that we incorporate across the district. So it's been, we're really, really fortunate to have LEAF on our team. So thank you on behalf of you. Very good.
Thank you. We have a possible motion related to acceptance of LEAF's grant money.
No, ma'am.
Sure.
I move that the school committee accept the LEAF grant awards as outlined on the final LEAF grant 2023 summary with a total award of $83,101 in euros.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Michaela? Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me. Thank you again and appreciate you coming over tonight. Thank you. All right, we are moving forward into administrative reports. I don't have much for today, other than to just not draw everyone on the committee's attention to the invitation that we have from the Mass Association of School Committees. The 2023 Joint Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference is this year, November 8th to November 10th in Hyannis. It is scheduled to be focused on the conversation surrounding investing in equitable school districts, moving from theory to practice. I was able to go last year and am planning to go again this year. It's an excellent opportunity to hear from educational professionals around the state and also an excellent opportunity to have conversations with other colleagues in school committees and educators from around Massachusetts. So if anyone is interested in attending that conference, then you can send an email to Diane and she will help coordinate for you to go. All right, superintendent report.
Sure, a couple of items. In your packet, there's a copy of a press release from the Hilly Driscoll Administration, and it announces the awarding of public safety grants. And so Long Meadow Public Schools was fortunate to receive a competitive grant in the amount of $43,000. Kudos to Tom Mazza and to our GPW partners for submitting that grant. And it will help us upgrade security cameras across the district, mainly Long Meadow High School and the community around there. This competitive grant, only 42 were awarded across the state. It's federal money that is channeled through the executive office here in Massachusetts. And so we're looking forward to putting that money to use. So thanks to Tom and his team for pulling that together. We have a meeting of the Middle School Building Committee next week. I think it's next Wednesday. The Middle School Building Committee will consider a process for awarding a contract for owner's project manager services. We are in the process of putting together, soliciting proposals for that work. And Armin Ray and Tom and I are meeting next week to talk on that meeting and work with the building committee on a process to award that contract. We expect that that contract will be awarded sometime in early September, I'd say. And so we'll keep you posted on that. Summer school is up and running, extended year services, enrichment program. Wolf Swamp is very, very busy. And we're in a much better position with staff this year than we have been in past years. In recent years, it's been difficult to attract teachers into the programs for the summer. But this year, we feel like we're in a much better position. We are also in the process of filling our curriculum, open curriculum director position. We're seeking Sue Successor mainly, and she prepares for October retirement. And I expect that we will finalize that process either in late July or early August. That's all I have today. We had a great meeting today. Principal Tom Landers, member of the guidance council staff with representatives from BAP. And we were exploring some ways to build a partnership that could potentially be of benefit to our teachers and our students. So I want to come on that potentially was a really rich conversation. So again.
All right, wonderful, thank you. We do not have assistant superintendent reports tonight, correct? No, and no student report just yet. Other reports, LPV EC, no report, okay. Energy and Sustainability, I think is underway still.
First meeting looks like it's going to be August 10th.
Perfect.
Let you know after that.
All right, wonderful. And Seal? No, no report yet. All right. We have no subcommittee reports, which brings us to ongoing business and student handbooks. So welcome Mr. Landers, the principal of Long Meadow High School, to have some conversation with us related to some recommended changes to the guidance.
You'll recall it was in late May, maybe early June, that we first brought some handbook proposal changes to you. And the most significant change that we need to make is in response to the new suspension law that was passed back in the fall. And the intention of that law is to ensure that districts are being more thoughtful in supporting students with behavioral challenges and to be sure that we are not resorting in prompt quick ways to suspension. We all know that excluding children from school isn't a way to correct behavior. It's best to keep kids engaged in some educational process. And so there's some language that came to us just for, by way of review, there's some language that came to us from our attorneys at Murphy, Hess, Tulli and Lehane. That's page one and onto page two of the handout that says, LPS Handbook Proposals. So we need to include in that language in our K8 Handbook and our Long Meadow High School Handbook. My recommendation is that we take the verbiage that our attorney developed for us. And it commits us to ensuring that alternative measures are considered or children are suspended. The other, the next item on your, for your consideration related to acceptable use. So there's some language that is proposed for modifying the acceptable use agreement that is found in the K8 and the Long Meadow High Student Handbook. The whole language is sort of a vestige of some language that at one time permitted students, we actually had an active bring your own device policy. And we moved away from that with the, with the distribution of Chromebooks. And so this language brings the language of handbook into alignment with current practice. I'm going to skip to the last page of this four-page handout. The language related to academic integrity. And this is some proposed language for the K8 Handbook. This language would include artificial intelligence as a signal to students that around plagiarism issues. And it also spells out some consequences associated with academic dishonesty at the middle school level. So that's for your consideration as well. The final item related to, and the reason why it's Principal Landers this year, the final item related to the potential development of some language to allow for the establishment of Saturday school. And Tom had written you a memo. There's a separate document in your packet. It's a memo from Tom explaining the rationale. And then on page three, you have the specific handbook language that would go in the LHS Handbook. So I don't know how you want to take this. If you want to perhaps, you could take this in chunks. You could consider the language from the attorney, alternative remedies for disciplinary consequences. That could be a vote. You could consider the academic integrity language as another vote. And then you could consider the acceptable use agreement as a separate vote. And then you could get to the Saturday school issue as a fourth vote if you wanted. Or you could think of all of those.
So I would say I think we can definitely do them all at once. If there's a component that we do not want included, we'll just make sure to add that as an item in the motion. Does that make sense? Yeah, to exclude. One particular portion. I think, why don't we first discuss the ones related to the language from the attorney and the acceptable use and the academic integrity? If there are any questions related to those, we'll start there. And then maybe Mr. Landers, I can have you give us a quick rundown of how the process of Saturday school was developed. Because I loved being able to read the group that was involved in that. And you can walk us through a little bit more information there. And then we'll go from there. So first up, any questions and or comments related to the language from the attorney related to alternative remedies, the acceptable use policy for student technology or academic integrity from the K8 Handbook? I'll take us off by just saying I like the language change under acceptable use. I think if we're flexible a bit more appropriately, as you said, I like it includes smartwatches and went from may be used to may not be used without the permission of, seems like a good, you know, refer, reference to the change in the way technology's been used, not bringing from home, but instead using listed. Any other comments, questions? Academic integrity language looks excellent. I like that there's clear information about not taking credit for things that were not created themselves. So I think that's, that's good wording. And how research can be used appropriately from the internet. These are helpful ones for students to be aware of in a policy. Thoughts related to any of those three policy changes?
It's important to start at young, too.
Yeah, I know. Definitely to include that in the younger handbook as well. And to be a little bit more clear there.
Good. Yeah, just on the plagiarism.
Yep.
How are we going tomorrow? Who's making the decision on that? I think it's a pretty fuzzy thing as to what is, what is not, what was AI, what was not. I think we would all probably come to different conclusions looking at similar stuff as to what was appropriate. Does that all come back to you, Tom? Or does that go to the teacher or?
This one's for K8 Handbook, correct?
Oh, this is only K8.
It's all of them.
Yeah. I didn't see that.
I took a shot at it, but I know Tom wouldn't. I took a shot at it, but I, I know Tom would, would, you know, has a lot of experience in this as well in high school. I, I think it comes down, you know, initially it's conversations between, um, students and teachers, hopefully preventative proactive conversations ahead of students submitting any work. That it's, that the expectations are clear about, um, what sources are permissible and how they use those sources and how they're used in, in whatever, whatever assignment is presented. And then there's a, a series of, of aggressive steps that, that can be used. Ultimately, it's the decision of the administration. So the, a teacher might make a report to an administrator. Administrator will sit down with the child, listen to the teacher and then go make a final decision on whether or not it constitutes academic dishonesty. I think like, like anything, like probably any provision of our handbook, ninety-five percent is dealt with through just ordinary day-to-day classroom conversations between kids and teachers. But at the end of the day, you're asking who makes the decision? Ultimately, it would be the administrator of the high school. I know you guys have the, um, turn it in tool. Is that still in use, Tom?
It is, the high school, we, we, uh, have turnitindotcom. And this, uh, past May, they have added an AI enhancement, uh, with an upgraded cost, which we are, we have invested in, uh, ChatGPT, uh, which is kind of the, the, the tool that, um, is, is kind of rocking middle schools, high schools and colleges. They also, um, allow us to join for free. So you can turn something in and say, did you create this? So we used that in, in the spring, uh, turnitindotcom. And then we also have formal lessons proactively that we start in every English class, every social studies class and ninth graders, um, in both English and social studies. We visit the media center to have a co-taught lesson before Halloween of their ninth grade. And we're going to dedicate a connect block to it in September of this year. Connect block is an advisory at the high school and it's a hot topic. So we're planning some PD, uh, so summer curriculum work has been okayed in the English department. There's some presentation, there's a working teacher group. So it's a hot topic. It's, it's, um, and you work with the student, you work with the family and, and, uh, but those two tools, while those two tools are not perfect, to be fair, uh, they give you a good idea if something has been, if, if it's an issue of, of.
Well, getting the pretty forthcoming.
Most are.
When it's all done, and you're saying, where did you get this information? Most are, are, are willing to let you know of where they got the information.
Right. And there's a learning, I mean, I want to say ten years ago, uh, the first issue of the high school results in an opportunity to learn. You have consequences, detention, then you write a three-page paper on three colleges and universities and what would happen, could happen to you there. It's an opportunity to learn and hopefully work.
But I just want to clarify, with the tools that are available for the high school, for example, the, the turnitindotcom, they have a function to detect AI-generated text data?
They added it this May. So we've always used turnitindotcom for, um, probably a decade, but they had an enhancement that they had in May. Yep.
Okay. Now, how does that algorithm decipher between, for example, like grammarly.com that will help you with synonyms versus sentence structure with an AI generator like ChatGPT?
So, um, they will give you, what I've seen is that they will give you back and they'll say, this is copied from this particular source. It's, it's supposed to, it's supposed to give you as much definitiveness as is possible, but it is not a perfect tool.
Right. But does it give you a percentage for, for AI-generated?
Turnitindotcom right now gives you a percentage. It'll highlight a section of the, of the paper, et cetera, that, that was, uh, that appears somewhere else. And then this new AI is supposed to do the same thing. We just purchased it, so we're going to go into the fall and see and use it, that aspect of it for the first time.
Okay. We haven't done any beta testing on it though to, to see.
In the English department did very, there was a very, very little, um, opportunity for that, but they were, they were the guinea pigs. We did it in both ChatGPT and turnitindotcom. And turnitindotcom has been something we've used, uh, for a decade. So we wanted to stick with them and for a small upgrade, we will see, we will see, uh, you know, how effective it is. But we'll use those and we'll use conversations with students and sitting down with a, a student usually results in finding out what happened, what decisions were made, they made a decision under, you know, under stress, you made a bad one, it usually comes out.
And this is just K? There's no provision for the high school handbook regarding AI-generated text?
Correct. We have existing language. What you have in front of you is K eight. Well, we have existing language for plagiarism or academic honesty, dishonesty already in our, in our handbook. I would maybe bring something to you next year based on what we learned this year, but we, we, uh, we're asking for no changes in our handbook this year.
Okay.
Other questions or comments on any of these three?
Um, Nicole, I, if it's okay, I just wanted to reiterate, I think we talked about this last time, but I think it would be really great to hear more about how the K through eight schools are teaching kids about plagiarism and about how to appropriately cite work and to kind of understand these things. I think to Adam's point, kids are, are exposed to tools that like walk the line between these two, you know, between generating your own work and getting help from machine learning. And it's, it's more complicated than it has been in the past. And so I'd love to hear more about how we're teaching kids, you know, how, how to use the tools that are available to them in a responsible way.
That's a great suggestion and maybe a possible parents' evening or parent, uh, batch of information to go home.
Yeah, we, we can, or can I clarify, Julie? Do you mean at, um, hear more at this meeting, at a school committee meeting? Or are you suggesting parents ought to hear more from the schools about how we're handling this?
I mean, I think it would be helpful to, I defer to Nicole, I think it'd be helpful to parents too. Um, you know, I would love to kind of know what's being taught to be able to reinforce it for my own kids and also to know it as a member of the school committee. So defer to you about the best way to do that.
jot down a note about that and we can circle back to that. All right. Any other comments right now? All right, Mr. Landers, can we have you give us a little brief rundown of Saturday school, how this conversation came to be, what your thoughts are?
Sure.
What that could look like?
Sure. The, um, we have an LHS handbook committee and that, uh, takes place first, begins in late January, February, and then we, by statute, the, the school councils have to vote annually on any changes. We had robust discussion about two issues. One, attendance issues, even though we, we talked about it quite a bit, there was agreement that no, that it wasn't going to be resolved through more rules. Um, society is rebounding and anyway, but to be, to be transparent, that, that was about fifty percent of the discussion and dialogue and attendance. And even though it's better than it was during the pandemic, it's still not back to pre-pandemic levels. And the other one, uh, topic we discussed was the November eighth suspension laws and how we can continue to move the needle. So we have been committed to, the suspension laws changed, uh, pretty substantively back in two thousand and fourteen with the idea that trying not to suspend as much, we didn't have a very high suspension rate to begin with. We have decreased that. And so with the changes in November of twenty twenty-two, it strengthened the language and said, not only try not, try to do other things, um, prove that you did other things, prove that you did other things and document that you did other things. So this is a, this is a continuation of our effort to try to, um, you know, decrease what I think is a pretty low suspension rate, uh, anyway. But it's an, it's an opportunity to try rather than keep students, you know, the, the challenge is to decrease student separation from school. So with a lot of jokes about Breakfast Club and, and all of that, it, it's an effort to say, under certain circumstances, you know, could we increase the number of internal suspensions and external suspensions? Again, which we try to keep, I think we're measured and I think it's, they're pretty low and we only do it when it is needed. But, you know, could there be another opportunity to, to do this in, in a measured way? And, uh, if this is met, if this is supported, we would work with Mr. Mazzard and figure out when. I don't anticipate that this would be, um, this would certainly not be every Saturday. We could probably do this with one Saturday a month and see how it goes this year and, and monitor it. And, and it's really, um, it's really an effort to, to try to keep students in school. And if there has to be a consequence, um, this would be another tool and other administrators built. Purposely did not put verbiage in there to say this must occur before a suspension, external or internal, because every situation is different, but it would be another op, option for us to use if appropriate, if and when appropriate.
All right, I'll open up for questions and then comments.
I think it's a great initiative.
Yeah. All right, seems like a good opportunity. Um, the only other question I had is maybe.
Go ahead, Nicole. Sorry.
Possibility of this also being an opportunity for attendance remediation, if there are students who maybe need to remediate attendance.
So there's not discussion as to this would remediate it because right now, um, you, there's not a automatically lose credit in, in LPS. There's not a, a policy that says if you hit this threshold, you automatically lose credit. Attendance is a challenge and we're hoping that, that, you know, I think it's a challenge outside of schools, it's in the workplace and, um, but, uh, what it, it could be used for is, um, for a way, if you saw a chronic, I mean, there are a lot of things that we try to do when you see chronic absenteeism. We intervene, we reach out, we involve the social worker, we involve, depending on the age of the student and the severity of the case, we have increasingly been involved, involving DCF, sometimes we were required under fifty-one A laws to, to, to file. So we're doing all of those things. If we could use it, it could fall under the internal suspension. If you get enough detentions and you don't get a detention until your fourth time at Long Meadow High School, you get a couple of chances, we make phone calls home, et cetera, we educate parents, try to partner. But we do have a few students, and not only a few, to be fair, but we, we probably have half a dozen students or so who racked up an ungodly amount of detentions and it becomes kind of overwhelming. We could use, you do a Saturday school, you address it. So we, we could use it in that way. If this is successful, if this is supported and this is successful and the district ever took an approach to say, you don't earn credit if you miss this many, uh, we could go there. There are other ways that that can kind of organically happen in the classroom. If you're missing that much school in the height, at the high school level, you're not going to do well. If there are extenuating circumstances, if, if students are under medical care or dealing with, uh, documented mental health issues, which we, we have an increased number of, we work with those students and families anyway. So it doesn't directly, uh, issue, you know, doesn't directly deal with getting credit back because it's not lost just through attendance, but we could, we could maybe say you can, you can turn these fifteen detentions. When you get that many, it becomes overwhelming and, and it's a small group of students, but we could get creative and do something like that.
Okay. Julie, do you have a question also or a comment?
Yeah, um, I was just wondering, I thought, I thought about this last time. What, what's the relationship between this and detention? Like, is it, could it be used in place of detention or is it an escalation from that?
I would say that Saturday school is more severe than a detention. Detention.
But would it, would you have to have tried detention first to deal with something? Are there instances where you would envision skipping that and going to Saturday school?
If it would, I would say it would depend on what happened. Detention, a, a discussion, you know, is the first step, a conversation, a phone call home. If something, um, so it, it, I would think that a, a detention would precede Saturday school. I think that staying, and we usually work with students, we say, you have Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday to do a detention this week or next week, what would you like to do? I think if we get to the point of assigning Saturday school, especially if it's once a month, we're saying, we're going to say, you're going to serve at Saturday school, you know, in, in two weeks and three weeks. So, uh, this would be more than a detention, less than, um, a suspension.
Part, part of the reason I'm asking is because I just, I think it's interesting because the policy is sort of framed as like a de, like less sort of restrictive punishments, right? That it's de-escalating from suspensions or out-of-school suspension. And so I'm just curious, like, how, how you think about making sure that it doesn't become the opposite, which is kind of like moving punishments that would have been a detention into this?
Can I take a crack at answer? I, I think we would, I think the proof will be in the data at the end of the year. I think it's not correctly, but framing this the wrong way. But I, the intention here isn't, isn't to give administrators one more way to punish kids, rather it's one way to avoid excluding children from school. So our hope would be that it helps us meet the spirit of the suspension law. Our hope would be that it would further reduce the number of out-of-school or potentially in-school suspensions. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, correct.
So I, I think I understand your concern, Julie, that this is one more way to, you know, it's one more way to get a kid, right? But the intention is, it's one more way to keep kids engaged.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we see is like, it's sort of unintentional, but I think, I think that that creep is like a real thing. So I would love the idea of you all coming back at the end of the year and showing us how it's worked out so we can think about that more.
Yeah, I, I, if this is supported, it is, I, I think it's, you know, I think everything's kind of a pilot in its first year and you, you look at data and we have dialogues and we see how often we need it. And I, I mean, with, with, I, I provided the statistics on, uh, internal and external suspensions at LHS for the last two years. Those are, those are pretty low numbers. When, especially when you look at the number of students we have and the, and the age group and, yes, these statistics. So I wouldn't think that we would have a very high number of these. If this is supported, I've been talking to Mr. Mazzar anyway, but, I mean, this is a budgeting, this is a finance issue, so we wouldn't want to be, I think we're limited in how much we could do this anyway, but I would certainly agree that we would bring back, we keep you, give you a mid-year report and end-of-year report as to how many, how many of these we, we used, um, if this is, if this goes forward.
If candidly, the, the ideal way, um, if, if, you know, budgets were not finite, the ideal way to respond to this suspension law would be to have, we've talked about the concept of a student support center, which takes sort of your old internal suspension room and turns it into more of a, a, a place where, where kids can receive some, uh, behavioral supports and even the counselor in a real purposeful way to address whatever behavior, um, they were referred to for. So, uh, that's something that we've been talking a lot about as an administrative team could become, um, could become part of our proposals to be, for F Y twenty-five. I, I, I think in the same way that you have a nurse's office where a kid goes, if they skinned their knee, patched them back up, get them back to class, we would benefit from having student support centers where students go have those quick check-ins with a, with trained counselors, stay up to speed academically and then get back to class. Yeah, so.
I agree and I would shame on you by no way, you know, we, we do that without that being called that now. I mean, we, social workers and school counselors and administrators and we, if a student gets an internal suspension or an external suspension, as part of that, they meet with a, unless it's a very, very rare internal suspension. But even, even too many detentions, they meet with a, they'll meet with a social worker, talk about changing behavior and, and why is this happening? And for God's sakes, how come we can't get through this? And so we, we, that happens, I agree with Marty. We have a, an internal suspension position that we're going to be hoping to fill and we will be looking for someone with some kind of counseling background. It's, you know, hoping for retirees or younger teachers or this or that. But we, that, that's part of what we do anyway. We, we would continue that and that would be part of this. It wouldn't be part of the actual Saturday if this goes through because it's two and a half hours and I don't think we just want to hire social workers on a Saturday, but it could be part of when they return, uh, part of the overall process and brush.
So I think when we last talked about this, one of the things we were talking about is sort of trying to envision how this is used. And I think it sounds, if I'm correct, um, incorrect if I'm wrong, um, to what Julie maybe was referencing with detentions. And I'm going to just create imaginary scenarios. If a student has, for example, plagiarized something, they might get a detention for the first round and that would be part of a detention. That's less Saturday school. Saturday school would be more the opportunity for a student that might have previously been removed from the classroom to be in an internal suspension or to be in an external suspension, would now be able to stay in the classroom, assuming we're not talking about something that has escalated to needing external suspension. Instead of having to be out of the classroom, an internal suspension could be in the classroom and then do Saturday school instead. Um, as a way to relieve some of the time they would have been missing class time.
Right, so the LHS handbook right now has a section that has, these things could result in detention. Separate section, these things could result in internal suspension. These issues may could result in external. It would apply to the internal and the external sections only.
Okay.
I mean, if you have repeated this, certain things that could get you into that mid-column of internal suspension. But um, but it would apply really only to internal and external.
This may be a dumb question. What, I I hear a lot about how, but I don't hear a lot about what's. What, how do you determine what's due in that two and a half hours?
So we would want it to be productive. We would want it to be productive and meaningful for students. So we would have them brief work. It's a chance for them to get going in the, in the brief overview that I, that I drew up. Depending on what they were there for, they would, uh, we could probably have them reflect on some behavior. Because there would be a follow-up. If you're in, if you're getting internal or external right now, you're going to follow up with a social worker anyway. And so this would be, you could have dedicate some of that time, I think no more than a half hour or so, to writing and reflecting on what's going on, answering questions. It's not writing an apology and saying what's going on, what got me here, et cetera. So I, that's what we anticipate and it would be a lead-in to chat with, follow-up with your school counselor and or a social worker. I mean, we also have other staff members follow-up. We use, i- if if the issue has to do with, you know, vaping or alcohol or drugs, on the follow-up, they see Shelley Warren. If it has to do with something that could result in a crime, if it continues, our social, our school resource officer was awesome. They, she would follow up with them. Usually that happens during an internal suspension, but you could arrange that before, after school or during an ice block. Our two social workers follow up with them. So some of that time in that, that Saturday school could be used to kind of think about that, think about that conversation that is, that is part of our process anyway.
But there's no extension of the, you know, inherent curriculum the student is undertaking into the Saturday school?
Uh, I, I, if I'm answering your question correctly, I I would say that the rest of that would be a chance for them to do their work.
Like a study hall?
Yeah, but 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 don't sleep, don't be on your computer, you know, be on, use your computer, but be doing some work. I don't think that they're going to be, if this goes through, I don't think there are going to be so many students in there. I mean, I'm thinking a handful of students. So you should be able to teach her and they would be being paid, they'd be. I did Saturday school way back when, nineteen hundreds. And uh, you know, I would have an essay, they would write on it, give them some feedback and then they could work on their work. And you just make sure that it's being, so they get a head start or jump on, on their work, so it's productive. You won't want them sleeping, you don't want them watching a video game, things like that. But other than that, I try to, try to make it meaningful for them so they get something done. They don't have to go home and do more homework.
But there's no formal establish amendment of that in the handbook as to the delegation of time to certain objectives?
Uh, the verbiage that I included just said that, um. That is, um. The verbiage, it would appear in, would say, considering that we try to build in learning and reflection of the more serious behavioral incidents, students may also be required, depending on the reason for the Saturday school assignment, to reflect in writing on the day even it resulted in the assigning of Saturday school. So it's there, it's not more developed at this time. I think it would be kind of see how it goes, learn from the experience if this is supported and maybe we can adjust that next year. There's no, there's no teaching in the way that.
Yeah, I I misunderstood how it was like a school. I thought there would be some sort of pedigree.
Yeah, yes. No, I mean, that's not the proposal, but.
Although it is noted that they would be expected to bring work with them.
Right, more like a study hall.
Then, other questions, comments? Okay, so. We have a recommended motion. If anyone has anything they would like to exclude from the recommended motion, now would be the time to bring that to our attention.
Can I clarify the motion?
Absolutely.
What is included in the motion?
So currently, the motion would include all of the proposed changes, um, all of the, all of the ones that are in our packet. So the language that was recommended by the attorney for the alternative remedies that's related to the change in K law. The amendment for the acceptable use agreement, the inclusion of handbook language for Saturday school and the change in language in the K eight handbook for academic integrity. Those four things would be in the motion currently.
I propose that we separate the K eight academic integrity language from the body of the other changes.
Okay, that's absolutely fine. All right, perfect. So then, um, we'll do two motions. One will be for the recommended changes. Can we number them? Does that work?
Yep.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so we'll say for the first three proposals.
One is alternative remedies, two is the acceptable use agreement, three is the Saturday school language.
Okay, so we need that language then to say approve the first three recommended changes. That would work on your end, Dan? Okay, um, so why don't we start there if anyone would like to make a motion related to the first three?
I move the school committee approve the recommended changes to the K through eight student handbook, section one, two and three. And the Long Meadow High School student handbook for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
All right, thank you. Um, yes, all right, perfect. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Perfect. Any discussion related to, um, one, two or three? Seeing none, we'll vote, Julie.
Yes.
Zach?
Adam?
Yeah.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. All right, perfect. So we now have one remaining piece.
I move that this, I move to the school committee approve the recommended changes to the K eight through eight student handbook, section four and the Long Meadow High School student handbook for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, Julie.
Yes.
Zach? Adam?
Yeah.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. All right, thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you so much, everybody, and I'll give you an update halfway through the year.
All right, yeah, let's do it. Here. Okay, so we have first student handbook. We are headed into new business. Oh, kindergarten, wrong. Small discussion there.
Sure, so for your review and consideration, um, I'm sharing a screen here that includes our projected enrollment, uh, for grades K through five. And Julie, you were able to see that at home? Okay.
Yep.
So we're specifically focused, um, asking you to consider kindergarten. So you'll see that at Center School, we have fifty-seven students enrolled in kindergarten. At Wolf Swamp, we have fifty-four students. Um, we also at Center have two students who had pre-registered. So that number is really closer to fifty-nine, really is fifty-nine. We have four students who have pre-registered through Diane at Wolf Swamp. So that number is really fifty-eight if all the pre-registriants follow through with enrollment. Um, so right now, we are below forty students per class at kindergarten at Center in Wolf Swamp. It's mid-July. Um, in our experience, involvements continue to trickle in. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know exactly where what the numbers will settle. They might finalize at eighty-nine and fifty-eight, which I think would be manageable. But if we don't have another school committee meeting until August, uh, fifty-eighth or the twenty-second, we would want to be in a position to add a section at either Center or Wolf Swamp or potentially both. Well, disclosure, we add a section at kindergarten that involves hiring a teacher and a paraprofessional. So, you know, if, considering where we might hire on the salary scale, it would be, uh, we would need to incorporate, allocate about two hundred thousand dollars roughly, um, to cover two sections on at Center and one at Wolf Swamp. So our thought, our recommendation for you this evening is to, um, consider a motion to approve a section at Center and Wolf Swamp if needed, so that we would have the discretion, um, to move forward if the numbers continue to creep up. Were you, have you answered any questions?
Um, can you talk to us about what that might look like from a budgetary perspective?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so early in the year to really know whether or not within your approved twenty-four budget, there'll be the capacity for up to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're still hiring, so where all those replacements end up on the salary schedule along with additional staffing changes that weren't budgeted, um, I'd say it's kind of too early to say. Historically, when we haven't been able to support the, um, additional sections, we've looked at school choice. So funding outside of the approved budget to get us through that year, um, if we don't have the funds available within the approved budget. So, uh, it is a large number. The school choice fund probably has about three hundred thousand dollars. It is where it'll end F Y twenty-three. So if we, if if we had to use it all from choice of use of, a good majority of that balance.
Has that been earmarked for anything else?
It is not allocated or, uh, has a specific out, uh, need in terms of that fund out.
What is it usually used for?
Um, we have invested in Chromebook replacements in the past. Um, we've used it for additional positions that were added either during the year or beginning of the year. Uh, so it really, it depends from year to year what the needs are.
Other questions?
Yeah, I guess my, my only thing, why, I mean, I don't have an issue having a meeting this summer. If we end up needing it, do we really need to do this rate at this moment, not just wait until the figures come in? Well, we, we've thought about, you know, when's the, you know, when might be the, the date that we would want to have this figured out. I think probably realistically by August first, give us time to identify, to go through the hiring process. If we needed to post, uh, for two kindergarten teachers or even one kindergarten teacher. Our posts are, for teachers usually stay up to two weeks. So it'd give you a couple of weeks to go through the hiring process and then, go through the posting process and then another week to hire a teacher. So we're saying this is a definite thing we want to do or they, because I thought it was more of a. Yeah, to me, to me, and again, this is for consideration and deliberation by the committee. I think if you, you asked me where the tipping point would be, I think if we hit sixty-one, once you get into the classroom with more than twenty kindergarten students, I think at that point, we would, we would want to post. If you, you know, it's, it's, I'm sometimes reluctant to provide a, a threshold number. Because sometimes it's also the intensity of the needs in a particular class. You could have, um, sixty students who, um, who are not high needs. You could have sixty, you could have fifty students with very significant needs. So we look at it based on the number, but we also look at the composition of the students in the cohort.
As a reminder, when does reg- is registration open? Right up until school begins, correct?
Never closes.
Yeah, so you're making the decision based on where we are on August first and then that's just the decision that we live with, whatever kind of pans out.
I mean.
It starts to push it.
Yeah, you can add sections. It's just then, you know, your class list get, are being developed and you know, those get posted later in August, but then, you know, wait too long, finding somebody to, uh, come on board, especially after the school year starts is that much more challenge, huh?
Yeah, class list is important consideration. Class list, I think, going out middle of August, August fifteenth-ish.
Something like that, yeah.
And so, you know, that's, um, that's, that's an important milestone. Once we pass that, that's, you know, one, you'd hate to go back to parents and say, well, we've scrambled the list, we've changed the rules.
Yeah, just kind of curious to know that if, if we didn't wait until later August, make a determination based on real numbers and how they come in historically, and I know this is anecdotal, what kind of pool of candidates are you looking at mid to late August?
Yeah, it's, I'd say it's a diminished pool, you know, and I think the, one, once you get into late August, you you're not, you're not finding the quality applicants that you find in July or early August. So I'd be, I'd be concerned about going out in late August now. And they said that, we were hiring last year, um, right into the beginning weeks of the school year and we found some outstanding teachers who were willing to take a chance on us. And did Julie have a question?
Oh, Julie.
Um, I think some of my questions have been answered, but I guess Marty, just to go back to what you said about the tipping point. If the numbers stay the same as they are on this spreadsheet, then we would remain with the same number of sections. And you're saying if we went over sixty, you would definitely add another section. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think ultimately it's, it's a decision for the committee. I think we could, if the numbers stayed at fifty-nine and fifty-eight, if that's where they'd go to, I would say those are manageable numbers.
But not ideal.
So, uh, okay, so I just, I, I guess I, maybe what I'm trying to understand is like, um, are you asking us to give you the ability to add a section like at your discretion, depending on how the numbers change? Or you're asking us to tell you like if it hits this number?
Probably more the first, but if, if the, as a committee, certainly if you add a threshold, by all means, that would be helpful too. So it, it really, it's at your discretion. If you felt like the numbers are out of place right now, even at fifty-seven and fifty-four, that you wanted us to add sections, we certainly could go ahead and do that.
Okay.
But it's not practice, it's, it's the, it's the policy, it's not practice, it's the policy for us not to add FTEs uh, without the commission and review of the school committee.
Other questions?
Yeah, I do, I just, so the money, the MECO and any of these funds you're bringing in, the I E safety net, savings account, whatever you want to call it, we've used that quite a bit and we've already earmarked a lot of that for potential where we've kind of spent, we're, we're pretty close to zero probably at the end of the year, but we're going to head. We may be negative right now and we use that, we have no wiggle room at all against my, his, my opinion. I obviously don't know for sure, but kind of sitting here going, if you're going to spend two hundred grand in that, you're not going to have much left for, and we're talking a whole year's worth of stuff that's going to come up. Like last year, we had, had different areas of, we thought children needed some extra reinforcement. We hired some divisions that didn't exist. We added them in and like, we're basically making a decision at the beginning of the year that will affect a lot of the year, will use up on that.
Yeah, my feeling would be we're going to recognize some attrition, some savings just based on additional staffing changes that weren't planned in the budget. Historically, I would say that a number of two hundred thousand is not unreasonable. The area that, uh, we've been seeing significant, significant growth. The area that, uh, we've been seeing significant, significant growth has been in our, out of district tuition placements. There is, um, some movement at the state level to try to help alleviate that increase that districts have been seeing. But again, that additional funding is uncertain at this point. And even if it does get approved, how the districts will access it is unclear to it. So there are a lot of variables that are unknown, I most certainly would not want to tap into the school choice. Balance and use up two-thirds of it, it would be us in a, in a very difficult position. But, um, if you're asking me at this point. If we had to add these sections, do I think we could find a way to fund it for FY twenty-four? I do think we can. It might tie our hands in the future, but yes.
Yeah, and I got it, I mean, if that's in anything, I, we can do anything, should we do that? I mean, hey, I can go down this list and pick all the different numbers I don't like, and I don't like, I think that's too high too. But there's also, I also like updating the curriculum, I also like doing things at the end of the year that update our schools. For all of the children, you know, and updates, and like, all these things we don't like. Um, I'm just, I don't know, I, I, I don't like spending this much money at the beginning of the year. Knowing how much we spent finishing last year, and how much of our, kind of that is the quote-unquote savings. Places where we can supplement our budget, the amount that we spent just to get all of the contracts done with the unions. It just makes me nervous, I don't like these either, so I don't get in the wrong, fifty-nine, fifty-eight, that seems a lot, but kind of is what it is. I don't like twenty-one, I don't like twenty, I don't like twenty-one down there either, I mean, that's a lot for a second in a first grade classroom. I get kindergarten's even more of a challenge, but I don't know, I, I, I hesitate, I'm, I'm fine with meeting anytime during the summer if we get to those type numbers. I just don't think swinging there is, is, it's like, because if you divide this by four, then you get to really, really low numbers. Then I kind of go, is that the best spend, or should we have spent it on third grade, and, I'm sorry, in second grade at Wolf Swamp?
I think so, when you think about like wise investments, I think like the, you know, the research shows us the best investments are in the early grades. So to me, spending the money, if you all think it's like the educationally right thing to do, spending the money on kindergarten so that we're not. Addressing issues down the line created by larger class sizes makes a lot of sense. I also just like, I don't, like, in terms of deferring the decision, I think for me, my, my decision-making is gonna be the same. It's gonna be like if Marty and your staff think it's educationally appropriate to add an additional section. So I don't know that waiting would necessarily change that for me.
Can I ask if you were to get to, say, sixty-one in one of the schools and decided to, um, add another section? If that authority is there, um, then would the recommendation then be to do four classes of roughly fifteen students each? Knowing that obviously some might be fourteen, some might be sixteen based on composition? Um, or would you recommend at that point opening additional, um, school choice spaces and increasing those class sizes a little bit?
I might be, I think it's an excellent idea, I, I might be reluctant to add choice slots. Because although they could be absorbed this year in kindergarten.
Like that.
Marginally.
I'd be worried about.
A bubble.
Tying our hands and creating us to force sections for that cohort of students going forward.
So that cohort then in first grade might be able to be a little bit larger, um, class sizes.
The potential.
Potentially, depending on how big it is. Other questions and thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, my just last thought is, I, I, I get what Julie is saying, and I get that the early years are obviously the better. So, so second, third grade are early years too, so why aren't we spending the money there? My bigger issue is I think we're truly setting ourselves up for dealing with a very large number at the end of the year that we have to address. And we started from the beginning of the year, we're spending all that money, we don't have alternatives. So that's my big nervousness, we may not end there, I get it, you have a lot of puts and takes over the course of the year, and I hope it all works out. Um, if it doesn't work out, where are you coming up with the negative four hundred thousand dollars? You know, what are we gonna go to, to town? I mean, that's where we gotta go, we gotta go out to town because we didn't spend our money wisely. I, I, it'd be, I get it, last year, very, very different, because we came out of a pandemic where we had a lot of excess funds. And we kind of were able to make adjustments, we couldn't hire anybody, so we had this plethora. You know, you, you have a year, we're, probably you're gonna get a lot more people that are interested, and you're probably gonna fill a lot more positions. You're not gonna have all this extra money over the course of the year like we did last year, where we didn't hire eleven positions, pretty much all year long. So we never paid any of those people because we couldn't hire them. Bank on that this year and going into that this year, even though this, I don't like these numbers, I think these numbers kind of stink. Um, I get it, but I, I just don't like it. So I, I, I think it's setting ourselves up to make some decisions that aren't very fun. So, in my opinion.
Do you think there would be more clarity in the decision process if there was an assessment made by like the finance committee? To integrate that into, you know, see more of the puzzle pieces out there, to try to get a handle on more of the intangibles? Or do you think that it's just too early in the, you know, unless we had a crystal ball?
You just don't know, the things that Tom was bringing up are very much valid. The state could come and give us a whole bunch more money than we were expecting, we were only expecting five hundred grand, they give us six hundred, positive a hundred grand. We don't get that money, we won't know that for a little while, we don't know whether we're not gonna hire for this. We've had two years now where we couldn't hire people, so we were like living, it was easy, because you didn't have a bunch of positions you didn't have to fill.
Right.
So we fill everything going into next year, which we won't be exactly, but there's gonna be some positions we can. We're banking on that little excess to be able to kind of make everything work, and better hope you don't hire everybody.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna end up being at the end of the year where a couple different things, you're not gonna be able to spend money at the end of the year, which we always have a big need. Security has been a big need, curriculum is a big need, there's a lot of different things where we spend it, this year we spent on contracts. Um, where we had to make things work together to be able to get a union contract done. Um, you know, next year, you, you, if you use two hundred right away, you, you will, not just the wrong decision. If the committee wants to go that route, I get it, I mean, it makes sense to me, I wouldn't want to have nineteen kids in my kindergarten, but I get it. But I also don't want to be dealing with, uh, negative two or three hundred thousand and go, okay, how you fixing it? I mean, it's pretty simple how we're fixing it, it stinks. Um, so there is that, it's a gamble, but I get what Tom's saying, what are you saying? There's probably, we might get lucky, you know, the right, lucky is a really, that way of saying, if that means the right person retired that we're able to hire in a lower rate. At the new position, I mean, maybe, uh, you know, we know some are, but I, I, I just, I don't love it, to my opinion.
All right, other thoughts, comments? I'll say it's definitely a thing to be aware of and concerned of. Uh, it is a not small amount of money, um, for sure. Um, also, I know that class sizes are extremely important, particularly at younger grades. Um, and I trust that you guys are, that make the decision that works best for academic needs. And hopefully we will, hopefully we will not find ourselves in.
One last crazy.
Yes, of course, absolutely.
Crazy thing I say every single year, why aren't we moving five people from Center to Blueberry? I, I don't, I get it, but I don't get it.
Oh, you're talking about the student.
All of our schools are wonderful schools, they're all wonderful teachers, I've met most of these, these, they're all really good. You have fifty kids at, you know, at Blueberry, you know, they, they probably live closer to Blueberry than they live at the Center, some of them. It's just, I know, I, I get it, you know, it's like, no, no, everybody always says, don't say that. You know, and I'm not talking redistricting, I'm talking, you know, asking five families if they're interested in moving to Blueberry, or ask these, any of these people. Move five over there fixes the problem, saves two hundred grand.
Well, I mean, it does today, but we don't know what the enrollment numbers are gonna be, I'm not saying that there's gonna be a run of houses in the Blueberry School District. And there's gonna be kids that come out of nowhere, but I think that, you know, we're still dealing with probabilities at that point.
But it is a way you keep, you know, if you look at the sections, each of could stay three, and then all of them in kindergarten have four sections.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, if that's something that policy someone wanted to take out.
I was gonna say, I think right now that's a policy.
Yeah, yeah. It's a bigger issue.
Because currently, the policy is to go to further districts.
I mean, it's a very logical point, I mean.
Four, four years of slow sand, man. I get shocked, I, I.
I appreciate you being the voice of reason.
Seems pretty simple.
All right, um, so we have a motion that, um, notes the addition of a kindergarten section. Is your recommendation that you would actually like us to give you the discretion to authorize the addition of two kindergarten sections if necessary? Instead of one? Okay, so you're asking for that discretion, that decision would be made roughly early August. Um, based on what you see for the numbers coming in, um, and. Then you would be able to report as the year progresses where that money, how that shapes out, um, from a financial standpoint. But educationally, knowing the spaces that we need, this gives you the ability to add those two spaces if they become needed. All right, seeing no other current questions or hands raised, if anyone would like to make a motion, there is a possible recommended motion in front of you.
I move on the recommendation, uh, from the, of the superintendent, the school committee authorized the addition of two kindergarten sections. One at Center School and, uh, one at, uh, Wolf Swamp Elementary School, uh, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Being of a motion, do we have a second?
Uh, fine.
Yes.
Would we, would we primarily see that idea if needed, or is it, or is it something that you would like us to do?
To additionally add them, um.
I think if needed, if needed, yeah, this is a potential.
Keep, keep reading that and.
I, uh, oh, sorry, it's something in my throat, um, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, if needed. I apologize.
Now we, now we have a motion.
There's other.
We have a second.
I second.
Thank you, all right, any further discussion related to the motion? Seeing none, we'll vote, Julie.
Yes.
Zach?
Yeah.
Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
And yes for me, all right, thank you. We have no executive session tonight, which means we have one final motion to close out our evening.
I move on at the school committee at during the July eighteen, two thousand twenty-three school committee meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Segundo.
All right, thank you, um, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, Julie.
Yes.
Zach? Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, thank you very much, and we will see you again in August, happy summer.